And take over when he joins us, so.
Okay.
Kelly, roll call, please.
Alrighty.
Here.
Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mrs. Klein.
Here.
Mr. Foyce.
Here.
Mr. Greider.
Here.
And Mrs. Jewett.
Here. Motion to approve the agenda as presented.
Second.
I need a motion.
Oh, motion to approve the agenda as proposed.
Okay, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries with that agenda and quick discussion of purchasing cameras, lasers, and digital evidence management system for the police department. With that, I'm gonna turn it over to our chief.
Thanks, Ms. Jewett. I'm Joel Fitzgerald, the Chief of Police, and I'm happy to have the opportunity to discuss with you some items for the second weekend of road, and I think will create some efficiency within the department. So upon my hire here, Mayor tasked me with creating an atmosphere that was conducive to smart policing and fiscal responsibility. As such, I'm here this week to talk to you about the need for the department to upgrade its current in-car and body worn camera policing systems, or tasers, or digital evidence management platforms. These all need to be improved to create internal efficiencies while really just modernizing our systems. As I spoke to earlier, I tasked Captain Mullis and Wendy Janowski to find public safety video surveillance solutions that had comprehensive product offerings. I got here and I took a good hard look at what we were using in body cameras and in-car cameras, and they were lacking. So Wendy and Dave took a look at our body worn cameras, in-car video systems, our evidence platform, and other accessories used by the police department and by departments across the nation. And we decided to present to you three separate entities that could replace our current system. Our system, again, really lags technologically based upon the platforms that have been in place for 14 years. So our current vendor, L3, they stopped our R&amp;D on their current product. And they're not updating our systems any further, so we have to make a leap to change what we're doing. And I'm gonna, again, offer you three different opportunities that we have that can get us to where we need to be. So L3 was purchased by a company called Safely. So in this presentation, you'll see that we're reviewing bids from Safely and two other major suppliers, Exxon Technologies and WatchGuard, which is a subsidiary of Motorola. In the next slide. So what are the goals here? Other than what I've already mentioned, we really need safer outcomes for everyone that's involved in a police encounter. That's your police officer and that's your citizen. Citizen transparency is, I should say, police transparency for citizens is of the utmost importance. We want to make sure that everybody goes home safe at the end of the day, and we have a great record of the interactions that we have with people. So with the feelings that are going on, I mean, everyone is aware what's happening in our nation. It's more important than ever to ensure that we gain community confidence and don't lose it. And part of what can ensure that officers and citizens feel confident in our interactions is improving the tools that our officers have to do their job and to be the guardians that we expect them to be. So the community members really expect transparency, empathy when interacting with officers. And what better way to ensure we're providing this to have systems in place that are going to give us unvarnished and uninterrupted versions of every interaction? How does it create efficiency? Well, we're tasked with doing more with less. We realize that it's important that whatever system that we put in place makes the workflow easier. So we can't have things that complicate systems any further. We jump in and out of different systems all the time, and we create a real lag amongst the efficiency in which our police officers work. So we want to take steps administratively to ensure that we're creating an efficient atmosphere for our police officers to do their work, to tag videos, to have uninterrupted video that isn't running out because of battery power problems. And, you know, we want to make sure that the first, that the time we spend and that the time we spend is more adequately devoted to members of the community, not working through certain problems we have with software. So what are the common challenges that we have? Liability and scrutiny. Agencies are under a ton of scrutiny, and rightfully so for some of the things that we've seen in the community and in the world. So critical incidents for purposes of a city can cost us huge in regards to liability, not being able to tell the appropriate story of what happened. We see it all the time. We see a partial video where a video was placed on the internet, a YouTube video, and it only tells part of the story when a police officer's body cam can tell the entire story. So again, I go back to being able to have uninterrupted video evidence of everything that transpired and not having a limited view that, you know, the citizens in our community will demand to see uninterrupted versions of what happened. And I think it's our duty to provide it. So our processes really have been pretty slow. The system that we have in place doesn't adapt well to the new digital environment and processes that might have worked 14 years ago don't hold up with the types of evidence that we're handling now. For example, we'll be moving into a new RMS and CAD system. And in those systems, we're gonna be able to tag video evidence and be able to place that video evidence and files embedded in police reports. That's huge. And with the current system that we have, we have severe limitations in being able to do that. So we hope to move, we know we will be moving to a point where we take an entire case and we ship it over digitally to DA's office instead of a carrying disc and copies of things over to present cases. But beyond that, there are other issues with our current system. There's poor quality of the videos that we have. The videos make it very difficult to see the movements of police officers and the movements of citizens, which obviously could cause its own problem. I don't have to go into much detail on that. But we need a real review of the video at the police station. We need our sergeants and our lieutenants to be able to audit video, to be able to watch a video in real time if they choose to. And we can't do that now. And activation and placement of our body worn cameras are really cumbersome and just difficult for officers to be able to negotiate. For example, officers have a very tough time in a struggle in keeping their videos mounted on their body. They also have a center mounted video that will sometimes be obstructed if they extend their arms and they push their firearm out. So these are things we, of course, like to see. And with the current system, it doesn't enable us to get a good picture of what happened in some of these very critical events. So not to mention, again, the fact that we can't review or at times upload, load some of these videos. That is an unacceptable answer in this era that we're in right now. The modernization problems of the system, not being able to get backend software for end of life product is in and of itself unacceptable for to be left high and dry by a company and not be given updates is something we can't explain to people. The interactive capabilities that citizens expect, being able to go online and obtain copies or, you know, for Freedom of Information Act request, to have this fulfilled video is something that's expected and we're not able to do. I spoke about the auditing, checks and balances, and the placement. But let's go more into this discovery. Takes about 70 hours for us per month to transfer discovery over, not only through our own divisions, but over to the DA's office. And that's a lot of time that is wasted that could be more efficiently used in another way. And I mentioned the battery life of these videos, I should say, of our body worn cameras. It's semi-solved with some of the extended life batteries we've gotten. But I'll go back to the vendor. When we have to ask vendors to effectively improve their products, that's not a vendor we'd like to be doing business with. If they know they have a problem with videos not lasting six hours or eight hours, and the average police tour duty is eight hours, then we're dealing with a vendor that has no interest in keeping our business. We can move on, guys. The common denominator for us, I guess, is when we're in situations where we have to use force, it's going to be very important for us to be able to use a manufacturer that is known to capture as much evidence as possible and to be able to reproduce that evidence. The current tasers that we use, for example, which are pictured in the slide. Our tasers are out of contract. One of the vendors that we're proposing to use is Exxon. Exxon is our taser vendor. Exxon provides a body worn camera product and in-car video product that all synchronizes. So we have an added cost of tasers that we can absorb if we go with, let's say, Exxon as the vendor, because Exxon will be able to not only provide us new tasers, but give us tasers at the five-year mark. We're proposing doing a 10-year contract with each one of these vendors. And each one of the vendors have intricacies in their contracts that they have offered. But we found that since we do use tasers, that we would be able to obtain weapons that are less likely to fail in the field. Tasers are, you know, a product that are only really offered by this vendor. And making sure that we have less lethal weapons is something that everyone, including our community, expects. So Exxon's taser product has improved over the years, giving us more range. And I think we'd all agree that a part of the escalation is providing officers time, distance, to make decisions and to use less lethal alternatives than using force. So with that being said, taser gives us the opportunity, I should say, with the Exxon product, to not only have a greater distance with this taser product, but to package that in with the in-car camera and body worn camera product. They offer new device management software which integrates. So basically, our taser would be, there'd be a camera mounted on our taser. In addition to the camera mounted on the taser, we would be able to have supervisors sign and look at exactly what happened from the field or even from headquarters. We would be able to get the ball rolling on being able to tell the real story as to what happened on any kind of encounter where we had to use a taser. I think that's also very important, being able to get out there and to tell our story, the real story, the entire story before the story's told for us. So you'll see that throughout this, there'll be a common theme. That theme will be that certain distributors out there offer products that we think will be very integral and will us moving forward into what's keeping and building upon some of the confidence that the community has in us. Move to the next slide, guys. So in use of force situations, comparing what we currently have to to what we would be getting in this new contract, I can sum it up by saying longer battery life, newer batteries in the taser products themselves, a seamless integration between body worn cams and in-car video products. And again, an automatic upgrade over at the five-year mark instead of us going out and paying, you know, $37,000 to $40,000, five years from now, that would be included in the contract that one of the vaser, that one of the vendors, excuse me, Exxon offers. We'll move on to the video systems. So some of the issues that we've seen in videos or everyday engagements, again, the complaints that community activists speak about, or when people allege police misconduct, the liability that comes with these complaints is high. But what's worse is the process to review things after a complaint is filed takes a lot of time, whether it's from the Internal Affairs and or it gets done at the shift level by lieutenant or sergeant. There's an inordinate amount of time that comes with compiling this information. So the video of an incident is oftentimes captured. When it does capture the story, when it's not knocked off or it's not malfunctioning, and that happens today, we have that happen. We find that in order to build a good case, we have to make sure that, you know, everything is above board. And the video today is only useful, you know, after the fact where we need to be able to demonstrate to our public and to officers that they have the confidence in the product that we're putting on them. You know, we've improved their radios, we've improved their CAD. But perhaps the most important thing that they have, that body worn camera that's placed here in an obstructive viewpoint, is now going to be something that we can move around, something that we can make sure it gets the entirety of an interaction. And it puts things in a necessary context, because supervisors are now going to be able to go back and audit randomly. We have audits done now, but those audits have to be done by hand. Wendy pulls audit information and randomizes it and provides it to every supervisor. What can happen with the newer video products is that they will auto-randomize and be disseminated by email to each one of our supervisors, again, serving and saving a lot of time from our internal staff, but also ensuring that supervisors are actually paying attention at the, paying attention to, I should say, the actions of their police officers and being able to document and performance records how well the officers are performing. I think that's huge and probably one of the most important components of upgrading these systems. So our request really has to do with, again, about 135 body worn cameras, our in-car systems, dealing with all of our marked police cars, a quantity of 34 in-car systems, and tasers, 135. We need 135 because body cameras and tasers, because you need over the amount in case there is a failure with one of the products being able to, you know, you want to personalize the body cam to the police officer, but also have another body cam stand by just in case the police officer has some kind of, you know, total malfunction with the product and we end up having to save it. That reserve's gonna be very important for us to keep. The company's being considered in this for us. As we spoke, one would be Exxon Enterprises WatchGuard Video. WatchGuard's a Motorola company, as it reads, and Safely. Now, it's important for you to hear this again. Our current company that we use, L3, was purchased by Safely. So all of these companies have come in and given us demos, and we've had the opportunity to really digest what we think would work best for this department. So you'll ask, what have we done in RFP? No, Sourcewell out of Minnesota, and I'll shorten this very long slide for you. It allows us to buy off of, basically, it's basically a state contract that we can purchase off of. So we can do a direct purchase off of this. And we did grab three vendors, because we know there are three vendors out there that absolutely offer these products. But we can do a direct purchase. The history of how and why we can do the direct purchase is listed on that slide. I'm not going to go into that any further. But that'll probably be someone's question as to whether we have to, you know, do anything else on this. And I think that our finance director would agree that since this is already on a Sourcewell bid, we're good to go as far as moving forward if need be, if authorized sessions. All right, and move on and go into what the different products offer individually. Exxon Enterprises, their product will be first, has a couple key features. Exxon is the product that'll offer us a 10-year deal at 30, 60, 90, and 120 months for payment. They offer hardware replacement for all of our in-car systems through the 10-year contract at 12, 60, and 120 months. A 10-year warranty. They are the preeminent provider of body worn cam and in-car video and evidence management in the United States. They have tremendous 24/7 support and allow for unlimited users, unlimited storage, and unlimited cloud sharing. What you may have heard in the past is that the cloud sharing and other forms of retaining these products is the expensive part. When you're dealing with the provider that does it and has done it for over 11 years, let's say, we would be dealing with the number one provider of those type services. So having those three things integrated is important to this department. And I think you'll see important, an important theme along the way for everything that we're speaking about today. Other features that Exxon offers is that the life of your actual body worn camera, 10 to 12 hours, is critical. If an officer comes in after making an arrest in the seventh hour of a shift, we don't want to have to worry about the officer's camera dying, not downloading, and then it costing us another hour, hour and a half for that camera to come back up for us to be able to have that officer write the report and process an arrest. That's unacceptable. That's a terrible inefficiency problem. So Exxon provides longer, more realistic bodily, body life, or body worn camera life. The activation feature, when you leave a vehicle, Exxon's product triggers. By trigger, I mean, when you walk out of the police car, your body worn camera and your in-car camera speak to each other. So an officer will be able to open a door, exit the police car, and his body, his or her body worn camera will immediately trip. That is huge. It takes the thought process out. It lets an officer concentrate on safety and to concentrate actually on not only his or her safety, but citizens' safety as well. So that's huge. Exxon also offers a trigger that is on your holster. So if an officer unholsters their firearm, it will send a signal to that, whoever we program, really. But it will be that officer's immediate supervisors who know that that officer's in a possible use of force situation with their firearm. That's a huge deal. Their security is ironclad, and they come law enforcement ready. I personally have worked with this company and put it in over a few hundred police cars. And the system is sturdy and out of the box, ready to go. The Fleet Two system that they sell is very easy for officers to install and de-install. So if they have a problem with the vehicle camera, let's say, they can take the vehicle camera, and this is my cell phone, but they could take the vehicle camera out of their car, detach it, and place a new one in the car and get that car back up and running. That's a huge difference from what we have right now. Many times, officers have to put their vehicle down for a significant period of time before they replace the camera inside the car. The front camera rotates. It gives you a better range of vision, a better range of sight. It will also trigger other cameras when other police officers are around. So if an officer wearing an Exxon camera gets on scene, it will trigger the other officer's cameras on scene to be able to capture multiple viewpoints of any particular incident, which is also a huge benefit to our department. So I'll move on for the sake of time here. Exxon just offers a tremendous plethora of product offerings that I think move us forward as an organization. Move on to WatchGuard. WatchGuard offers us no upfront investment of cost, and they don't make the payment due for another 12 months after obtaining the products. The price is pretty much the same in the 10-year agreement as it is through 11 through 15 in the agreement that you'll see attached to this, to this production. But warranty on the body worn cameras and in-car cameras, and their product is a no-fault coverage. They're not gonna charge us for anything that breaks due to officer neglect or what's perceived as officer neglect. We can be terrible on these products. So, you know, WatchGuard says, we'll replace it, it shouldn't break. Their hardware, their hardware service, they're offering us 24/7 support, just like Exxon, an unlimited number of users, long battery life of up to 12 hours. Their battery is detachable. So instead of placing the entire piece of equipment in a charger or in a holster within a car or within a charger, you take the battery out and you would replace the battery. They have wireless uploading, which allows a continuous flow of uploading from the body worn camera or vehicle into the storage area. They do offer an integrated in-car and body worn camera system, and it provides a natural field of view. Their encryption is very strong for their video and audio products. And they have a record after the fact feature. These products, you can set to record, let's say, 30 seconds before you arrive to an incident or 30 seconds before you would turn your camera on. So they very much highlight that feature. You can set it 30 seconds before or 30 seconds after. So you're still technically recording in the background even after you press that camera to turn off. That's a huge benefit, obviously, if we're conducting some type of investigation into a use of force or we suspect that an officer tried to disengage their camera for some reason. We'll move on to Safely. Safely offers the recording for the full shift, much like our other vendors. But Safely gives you a quicker recharge time. Safely, again, is the company that was purchased by L3. So Safely has promised several different things with their in-car system, saying that their system can work seamlessly as one system and that the camera alerts as officers. You know, officers have several different versions of how they can be alerted that their camera is on by way of like a pager function or an audible function or having LED lights. I don't know that those functions are absolutely necessary, but they're different than what the other vendors offer. Safely has a higher density of video recording. You can compress the video that Safely offers and package it so that you're not eating up as much of your space when you're saving the video, which is immaterial, I guess, if you're being offered unlimited video storage by other vendors. Uh when you're saving the video, which is immaterial, I guess, if you're being offered unlimited video storage by other vendors. Safely it allows you to off to upload body worn camera, video, audio and metadata file information. In the in-car video system and it will. Uh regulate the voltage to ensure that the batteries are protected, that's a good function because if you have a battery surge, you. Really don't want to lose video because of some type of surge, we have some power outages at times. And and be good to be reassured that you don't lose uh any video there, but their product's pretty rugged and it's one that uh. You know, it's comparable in, I guess you could say. It's sort of comparable to what the other products offer as far as stability is concerned. Um I don't want to eat up every portion of. Your question and answer segment here, so I will um I will tell you that if we can just go to the end uh. Wendy and Dave, there we go. Hey, let's let's go to the overall cost, Exxon is offering us a ten year contract for all that I spoke of, body worn in-car and uh. You know, backend equipment, the storage uh and data information. For a total cost of four point oh seven million dollars. Um they were able to break that into a one to five year deal or six to ten year or or a combination of one to five, or she I should say your one to ten year deals. And um. You'll notice when we compare the costs, don't get sticker shock because. These are costs that we would be paying for our storage over the lifetime of any one of these products. If you'll move on to the next slide, WatchGuard offers us a ten year contract for all the same body car in-car. Theirs are two point one seven nine million, however, we have to still buy our tasers and replace them, that cost is baked in to the Exxon pricing. For a total of three point one nine two million. The differences are just what I said, the differences are in the product. And in the backend software and what we're paying for and what we think we get out of Exxon versus WatchGuard versus safely, if we move on to safely. Safely is offering us a ten year deal for all things being the same. At three million dollars, but again, we're paying a extra one million dollars for the replacement tasers for officers and. That would be a total of four point oh three million. If if you go forward, Wendy. Uh Y one over the other, Exxon is basically the the number one vendor for Taser. And body body car and in-car camera systems integration. They have that signal sidearm where when an officer unholsters. That we will get that signal, letting them know that, letting us know as supervisors that they have unholstered their firearm. You can replace, you can place the camera on any portion of your body. And it has all the key features already in place, it's sort of an out of the box, ready to go, uh low maintenance. Um option for us, WatchGuard Video has the Record After The Fact, which is their patented feature, again, they can go back. To twenty-three to a hundred fourteen hours, we can set that ourselves depending upon the resolution. They have many of the key features in place that we talked about, but the the key difference between Exxon and Taser. Is that Exxon has promised many of these features in twenty twenty-one. Um my trepidation is that Taser is doing this, has been doing it. And and uh I should say Exxon uh has been doing it and now WatchGuard is. Going to be doing it in the second quarter of next year, which gives me some pause, do you move forward, Wendy? So we we, the senior risk control specialist for the city, uh this was a quote. From him and I thought this was important to share with you because I discussed uh some time ago. Our move towards smart policing and Sean of Travelers Insurance, who's our rep, was incredibly happy to hear these efforts and is full support and is in full support of this project. What they, what that means insured is that in addition to our changes and. Policies and procedures, our changes in in technology and us even moving forward. In this manner, taking a good and uh deep dive into three vendors that offer us. You know, smart policing type of options is something that. Travellers would like to see us do because they believe it mitigates some of the uh possibility of liability that the city seeks, so. What is, what is it in general for our smart policing, interconnected devices, including our weapons, vehicles and camera systems, guys and gals, we have. We've moved past, you know, not looking for connectivity as a city. Our entire city is looking to move forward and lay fiber down and to be an interconnected smart city. Smart policing is part of being a smart city, downloading wirelessly throughout our city. Uh one key portion that I neglected to mention, so please forgive me, and that is. Dictation, officers will be able to with an Exxon product as opposed to other products dictate their police report instead of. Uh having to come in and type up a police report now because of lagging uh internet connectivity. Uh that is a huge, huge deal and time saver, keeping officers on the street. Being able to, you know, have them dedicate their time to protecting and being guardians in the community, so. We need to keep the upgrades coming with the changing technology and we need to make sure. That as a police department, we are auditing and taking a good hard look at what our officers are doing. Wendy? So I I wrote this and and I I won't read it, but. Uh it's about efficiency and effectiveness and doing what's right for officers, keeping officers on the street. Uh I think you have three, we have three choices here, two of which are the predominant choices, one of which would be the. Existing product that was bought out by another uh company that I wouldn't recommend. But uh Exxon would be uh the product that we recommend as a department, uh we've had our officers test these products, we've had our officers. Provide feedback from top to bottom, that means from, you know, the highest. Ranking officers in the department to our line people who are the most important to give us feedback. And the consensus was that they want to move forward with the Exxon product because they felt that it helped them do their jobs. I'd ask that the council considered us, I know that it, you know, on paper, this looks like a huge, huge investment, but please remember that this is over a ten year period. And includes all the upgrades that we will be piecemealing, asking for throughout those ten years and uh. With that, I will close this and ask for questions.
Alright, is there uh council questions?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Amos.
Uh yes, chief, uh just a couple of questions on the Taser, I was around when Waterloo. Uh first implemented the Taser system and those tasers that they had, they told us that when you squeeze the trigger, it. Activated a camera on the Taser and I'm just kind of wondering, is that the case with these? Old tasers that we had or was that just something that never happened?
I wasn't here for the purchase of the old tasers and maybe Captain Maylis can chime in, I can tell you that the new tasers. Will not only download that information, but the uh the old Taser product that I know of, you were only able to download that when you. Uh put the chaser back into the charger holding. Now, you're able, you would wirelessly download that video information like you would from your body cam and you would from your in-car video, it would all be synced. And you would be able to get and retrieve that immediately, uh Captain Maylis was the first uh Taser products that were bought here, just the standalone handheld Taser that. Recorded video.
Yeah, the current tasers we have don't record, but the, I believe the new Taser seven that they're talking about does have the ability to record.
Okay, and thank you, Captain, and then the the other question that I had is, is this. Does the police department still have the Taser policy that they had that they developed back when they first started them as far as um. You know, um the ability for. Let's say like someone got tased and when they first started it, they took the individuals to the hospital. But then they got away from that because they found that the injuries weren't that serious, so all he would do was remove the Taser and put a Band-Aid on it.
I can answer.
Go ahead.
Yes, sir, I'm sorry to cut you off, I can answer that, the uh even the newest use of force policy deals with the removal of prongs and the Taser. Uh we prefer to have a medic remove the prongs. Uh they're really unless it hits or strikes a critical area on someone, there is really no need to send them to the hospital. Um however, I would prefer the ambulance removing the Taser prongs than having an officer do it unless it's just tied up in, let's say, a person's hair. Or it hasn't penetrated the skin, perhaps it just penetrated a jacket or so, I don't have a problem with officers removing it, but I do. If it, if it does penetrate skin.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Bowden.
Thank you. Chief, chief, what's a, what's a cost of the current tasers now, not the Taser seven, but but uh if we were to purchase other tasers?
Uh right now, the uh the Taser purchases, Wendy, if you go back, that'd be a. Is that the million dollars there uh for the Taser?
Took a a million twelve, one million twelve thousand five hundred dollars divided by a hundred and five tasers and I came up with a seven thousand four nine dollars a Taser.
No, that that wouldn't be accurate.
Okay, but I mean, then can you give me a cost tasers if that's, if if a million twelve thousand, it's a Taser cost, we're buying a hundred and thirty-five.
That uh actually accounts for not only that one Taser product that we're getting this year, but two upgrades. And it would go from year five to year, I mean, we would get the upgrade immediately, another upgrade at year five and.
One at year ten?
Yes, correct.
Are we getting three new, three, three new tasers for that price or just just upgraded software?
Oh, the new Taser product, they have, they are constantly re-engineering the Taser product and.
Is alright, and on on the, on the equipment that's going to go into the cars. Does uh Exxon put that in or does, is that going to be contracted out and something our garage does or we tend to like three E?
The Exxon folks would put, would would come here, uh Wendy and several others would be taught how to install the Exxon product. Um I had folks in, let's say, Fort Worth Police Department installing the Exxon product to replace an old product, so I know that they they teach our folks. How to do the installs and quite frankly, the the new Taser product is so simple as I described. That it's a matter of dislodging the camera and and inserting a new camera if there's. For ninety percent of the problems, if there is a problem, you just change the camera out and that's. You know, normally fixes it, but it takes us out in the realm of having to, you know, go and have our cars. Down for a long period of time, going to some person outside of our view to to fix any kind of problems that we have.
And then, let me, let me, I may close my. I apologize, uh you you mentioned earlier that that the difficulty in in losing your body camera and and struggle. How do these new cameras stay on and stay attached during a struggle and if if compared to the old ones?
They have several different uh methods to to, I I guess, one of the, one of the big things is. You can wear a uh, there's a lapel camera that you are able to attach and you can attach it through a loop that goes on your lapel. It, you can wear it on your glasses, they provide you with glasses that have an attachment on the side, which again, if someone knocked your glasses off, it would knock the camera to the ground. But the the magnets that they use to affix uh the tasers are. Super strong, I've had this Taser, I've had the Exxon products, so I know that theirs are strong. I also uh saw the secondary product offering and and theirs was a pretty strong uh, you know. Latch as well, so. You know, one of the keys is you can't tell somebody that we didn't capture it and we certainly want to make sure that we have the options of being able to not only. Capture the interaction but to do so in a means that's unencumbered and I think. I made sense earlier and I don't know if everybody was on earlier, but with that having center body mask, the cameras that we wear now. If if one of our officers shoots someone, um I I'd be surprised if we're able to catch very much. With that video being obstructed by the officer's outstretched arms.
Okay, and then, and then uh are there any grant opportunities? You know, like, like the Department of Justice grants, anything like that for upgrades like we have for our.
I have uh the good Captain Maylis, who's also on the line, constantly searching for uh. Any potential options we could have, I, the one funding option that I looked at that I didn't mention yet would be, we've uh. You know, we've actually done very well with the ATE and the GATSO project, uh you know, I, the numbers I have here is uh. We have through January first of this year through now with thirteen cameras. We have a little over half a million dollars in revenue. Uh we've looked to add eight new cameras in the twenty twenty-one budget that should. Um bring us in maybe three hundred and seventy thousand to three hundred and eighty thousand dollars in revenues, so my hope is. That uh that we were able to leverage some of that to just offset the body worn camera, smart policing initiative, I think that that's a reasonable use for.
And beca- because we did it uh uh last year uh. Oh, to to use a portion of that as property tax relief and that's how it was originally originally set up. What in in your line item, I don't want to, I don't want to occupy this whole thing, but in your line item for this type of technology now, what are we spending? Compared to what we would, we would spend if we upgraded.
I don't have that handy, but it's very little, I know that uh we've asked for some upgrades in in uh camera systems and video. Uh Dave, what were the uh the requests last year for video and and the actuals in funding? Out of bond monies?
Well, just for the information systems, we spent about fifty thousand um just for that alone. And then when we do um Taser replacements, you know, over like a two, two and a half year period, that's roughly fifty grand also.
And those are incremental replacements that don't necessarily get us the entirety of our police department, obviously. They're not outfitted with the newest Taser product and I should mention that the older Taser product is. Again, I mean, it wouldn't be something that we couldn't use, however, they would no longer be uh. You know, the the most contemporary product that they have out there.
Right, so but what I, all I was trying to get at is is if we have, we earmark every so many years fifty thousand dollars per Taser, I mean, we're money ahead. In the, in the long run, the, and and with the, with the technology, I would think that if if we could find a funding source or. Or how we, how we would work this into our budget, it it'd be an investment, I mean, we're. You know, we're spending twenty-five thousand dollars a year just on tasers.
I agree.
Body cameras and that's not counting what we spent on on the time and the videos and the and the and the staff.
And I think that that's one of the reasons why I'm trying to get this all wrapped up into one smart policing initiative. Uh we've piecemealed things together for many, many years and not caught up with technology and not caught up with what's expected. Out of the police department and this, this move, this one move in and of itself would. Give us the most contemporary equipment and allow for us to project over the next few years. Uh what the costs are going to be, a flat fee each year and then we know we're getting the replacements from. One or two of the companies that are the preeminent companies for this kind of uh equipment, so I mean uh. I I think what what we put together, I know what we got from Taser is probably the, I should say Exxon, excuse me, I'm so used to saying Taser. What we got from Exxon is their lowest quote for probably any city of our size in the country. Uh and I know it's, doesn't make a hill of bean men or hill of beans when you see a huge number like four million dollars, but. We pay now or we pay later and that's why I think travellers were so interested in what we were doing because they saw us positioning ourselves better to be able to respond. To events where we use force and to be able to just, you know, uh say that we are, you know, contemporary in what we're doing. Just, again, I I know that the uh. That the four million is a staggering number, but we we're going to pay it one way or another, um and. It may be because we piecemeal it along the way and then end up having a total transition into uh. A a cloud provider that charges us a whole lot more, uh what we're getting now and these quotes are close, but. They're not close enough not to make Exxon, in my belief, the the number one provider here because they do it. They've had the, you know, decades of of work and they're your preeminent provider, uh I could get a better breakdown for you. I could get a better breakdown for you as to how we might be able to, uh, you know, look at some grant opportunities, but we can't count on it. I think I'd rather look at maybe the traffic related, uh, non-police ticket revenue. I'm saying non-police because I never want to rely on police to go out and tell the police officers that you have to go out and write tickets, but our ATE funding, um, in and of itself is a, is a source. And we are building out, building that source out and projecting that that's going to bring in another four hundred thousand dollars a year. So that, uh, that would be right in that that sweet spot we need to be each year to be able to afford this, uh, this move.
Are you saying above and beyond, but we're already bringing one thousand?
That's correct.
Oh, I don't want to occupy any more of your time. All those other council people speak. Thank you for your time, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Any questions?
Mr. Grinder.
Yeah, chief. So if someone's looking at these projections, they, and you know, the dollars and cents, they might say, well, why not go with watch guard, you know, but it's cheaper, all that kind of stuff. Could you speak about what concerns you or the department might have having two systems and trying to integrate those? We know with Exxon, it's the tasers, it's the body cams, it's the cars. What additional challenges might there be if we have two different systems that are working if we went with a different option?
Yeah, I'm glad you, you asked that. That is what we've been doing and that's what we need to get out of doing. It's the challenges that are that one, uh, company or one system fails to support their technology any further. Again, Exxon is a, is a company that I've, you know, had in the past and, uh, you know, I don't make any, you know, money off of this. I just give you my opinion. And, um, just their innovative nature in which they've, they've put products out there for not only the safety of the police officer, but the safety of the civilian and their citizen facing products are perfect for what we intend on conveying to the citizens here. Um, I don't want to get, again, if we mix and match, we run that risk of just not having, we have tasers now and we have body worn cams that they said they're not supporting anymore. And the body worn cams are, we're being told that, yeah, hey, the new company bought us, we're going to do better this time. And then we're told, told by another company, well, six months down the line, we'll have this. Well, we know that one company here is going to provide all this and we know we're getting good pricing. So I, I would just ask that we just digress from sort of, you know, mix, mix and matching things and try to get something that's going to be stable for us for a decade. Thank you for that question. Thank you for that question. I neglected to, to say anything on that.
Counsel, any other questions? Um, just really quickly, um, the, um, the ability to have an integrated system, the ability to be able to have real time information, the ability to be able to have, uh, incredible accountability for the citizens uh, that are out there as well. Uh, there's conversations all across the country with regards to accountability and use of force. Uh, so this gives greater accountability on both ends. Uh, so yeah, definitely need to have, uh, some more conversation about this.
Mr. Grant.
Mr. Morrissey.
Oh, I thought you were finished.
I was, I was about to close the meeting, but yes, sir.
Oh, just a couple of questions. I was on mute there, couldn't get in, but, uh, uh, Chief Fitzgerald.
Yes, sir.
What percentage, I, I mean, if it's four point oh seven million, uh, over ten years, is that correct?
Four point oh seven, yes.
Yeah, wasn't that what the number was? And that, I, I mean, I'm just figuring that's about four hundred and seven thousand a year, what would be the average? Uh, what percentage of the overall police budget would that be? As compared to what we're paying on that in, in each year's budget at the current time?
Well, that, that would depend on bonding and, you know, what we're, what we ask for each year. That, that number would vacillate.
Do you, do you know what the percent is now that if there was a comparative package uh, for what we have now, what it would be of our police budget?
I didn't compute that, but I could get it for you. That'd be fairly simple to, to compute. Yeah.
Okay, okay. And I just was, uh, the, is it necessary, I mean, going through this, um, uh, overall, you know, numbers and everything on the second attachment? Um, is it necessary to get, uh, these different, these three different, uh, areas in those quantities?
Well, are, are you asking, uh, if it's necessary to purchase them for the entirety of the department or do it in stages? Is that, is that what you're saying?
Yes, yes, yeah.
Um, you don't want to stand up, uh, multiple systems. I would, I would prefer, uh, doing a total transition because our, the taser product is an Exxon product and it works together with the other Exxon products. My fear is that we have one product that we're advancing with and we have, let's say, a police officer that gets into, uh, use of force situation and that police officer has the upgraded product and can provide, you know, um, a good story, right, with their body worn cam information and their car information. And then another officer has the older product and we're stuck answering, well, why would, why didn't we just transition over to a, uh, you know, the total product and have something that worked and was stable? Uh, I just, I just think, I think it's a good idea not to stagger it. Uh, cities do it from time to time, but we have to be consistent. I think what we, what happened in the past is that we've staggered things and we've not fully funded them along the way. We've said, okay, we'll stagger this and we'll buy more tasers next year. And then we would ask for tasers, correct me if I'm wrong, Captain Maylis. But then that line item or that bond funding would be used for something else.
Would Chief, Chief Fitzgerald, yeah, what I, what I was looking at, uh, di- maybe a little differently is it looks like with, uh, body cameras with the tasers, there are quantities that allow each one of the individual officers to have one of those. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Well, is there a way to lessen the cost by sharing those between the different shifts? So you don't have to buy as many?
That is, that is a way of doing it. However, if you have, I mean, that's a way of doing it. That's a way that is being done currently. It's a part of the problem that you, you run into is that, you know, by the time you get full funding to go ahead and move on to a total product solution, you're moving on into the next solution. So the upgrade happens, the new equipment is, is there for you and we're transitioning out old products for, you know, let's say a generation sixty a year. Um, by the time we got to year four, they'd already be putting out another product and we wouldn't be fully equipped.
But Chief Fitzgerald, what I'm suggesting is that you don't do it staggered. You just get, uh, let's just divide a hundred and twenty by three, that's forty. And you just get forty and then first shift gives the second shift, gives the third shift the same, uh, body camera, the same, uh, taser.
The only problem that you have with that is going to be uh, the transition, the handoff of the taser product, you, you got to recharge, you have to recharge it again. That's what we run into. We have, you know, battery life that gives you eight hours or less when we should be getting, let's say, twelve hours of, of life. And, um, you know, you run into the product, problem of then having an officer then have to come out off the street and pick up a new body worn cam that may not be charged yet. We need to get past that. We need to, you know, modern agencies are providing each officer individualized body worn camera. Um, it's something that's a, a part of their equipment nowadays and we have to look at it like that. Um, I'm not going to say it's absolutely impossible to be done that way, sir, but I, I would strongly, strongly urge just think about making sure that we got each person their own product. Yes, sir.
Thank you, chief. Uh, one last thing, and that is I think the, what, and Michelle Weedner could correct me if I'm wrong, but the automatic traffic enforcement funds, I think that money was allotted to the general fund to be used for, um, any department, I, I guess, based upon how the, uh, council, uh, approached that with requests from other departments for use of those funds, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, I think, um, Michelle.
Michelle Weedner, Chief Financial Officer. So those funds, the resolution said would be used in the general fund two years in the, two budget cycles in the future to offset the police operating budget because that, um, controlled property taxes.
Thanks.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Morrissey. Uh, further conversation, um, Mrs. Jewett, can you close us out?
Yeah, I just, before I do, my question, my only question would be just how we're going to pay for it. So I'm asking that the chief and Michelle give us a proposal on how this would be paid for. With that, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second. Motion to adjourn with second, all in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you. Madam Clerk, are we ready to start the Finance Committee?
It will be Deputy Clerk.
Oh, hi, Leanne. Okay.
Hello.
Are we ready to go?
I'm ready.
Okay, um, welcome to the Waterloo City Council Finance Committee. Roll call, please.
Mr. Morrissey?
Here.
Mrs. Klein?
Here.
Mrs. Jewett?
Here. Motion for the agenda in minutes, please.
Motion to approve the agenda in the minutes of December fourteenth as proposed.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Uh, will somebody take the travel requests and the pre-authorizations, please?
Madam Chair.
Yes, Mrs. Klein.
Travel request is Tyler Jansen, Maintenance. It's for a water and wastewater operator training certification program held in Cedar Rapids, Iowa from December tenth, eleventh, seventeenth and eighteenth of two thousand and twenty in an amount not to exceed five hundred and forty-one dollars. The second is Officer Christopher Kubli and it's for officer, basic officer certification, I L E A in Johnston, Iowa from January fourth through April twenty-first of two thousand and twenty-one in an amount not to exceed nine thousand seventy dollars. And the third one is Todd Wright, Garage Mechanic. It's for Reliant Fire Pierce Fire Truck Wiring and Command Zone classes. It's in Appleton, Wisconsin from February fifteenth through the nineteenth of two thousand and twenty-one in an amount not to exceed three thousand twenty dollars. The fourth one is Officer Mark Nissen. It's for an S R O and beyond class meeting. Destination Waterloo, Iowa dates December twenty-eighth through the twenty-ninth of two thousand and twenty in an amount not to exceed two hundred and ninety-nine dollars. Number five is Six Fire Lieutenants for a class meeting Blue Card Incident Command Certification. It is online. It's for, the dates are one year subscription and in its amount not to exceed two thousand three hundred and ten dollars. The pre-authorizations are, the first one is for the airport in an amount, an estimated shipping and handling of fourteen thousand five hundred dollars. It's for a new airport website. Number seven is a building maintenance request in the amount in estimated shipping and handling of three thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars. It's for repipe the main boiler loop in the west mechanical room at the Center for the Arts. Number eight is a leisure services request in the amount in estimated shipping and handling of two thousand six hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-one cents. It's to replace twelve replacement battery packs for Young Arena Emergency Lighting System. And number nine is for the police department in an amount in estimated shipping and handling of eight thousand six hundred and twenty-seven dollars. It's for removal, no, it is for renewal of annual Leeds Online Power Plus Pawn Records System Software.
Second.
Discussion? I would just ask, is Randy Bennett present? And, and number one, Randy, is there a reason you're coming to us for the request after this has happened?
Oh, for the, uh, um, training certification, yes. Um, because this is part of their C E U and I do have to apologize because I probably should have called you guys in advance for that. So I do have to apologize on that.
So it has already happened, correct?
They're, they're working on it, correct. Yep.
And I know you know that in the future we like those in advance.
Yeah, and I have to apologize on that.
Okay. Any other questions? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Would someone take the budget line items to be amended, please?
Madam Chair.
Mr. Morrissey.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the following budget line items to be amended. Uh, first is approval of the project budget worksheet for a ten thousand dollar donation received from Young Family Foundation. We plant trees in city parks. This planning take place and will take place in spring of two thousand and twenty-one. Next is approved project budget for twenty thousand dollars received from Young Family Foundation to be used for pollinator plantings and will take place fall of two thousand and twenty-one. Times needed to prepare the soil for pollinator planting. Next is the project budget for twenty thousand dollar donation from the Young Family Foundation to offer a plant Waterloo residential tree planting program for a third year, a program to be offered in the spring or fall of two thousand and twenty-one. Next is approved the project budget for the agreement with the U.S. Marshal Service for the Northern District of Iowa Task Force Project in the amount of twenty thousand dollars for overtime services estimated by the police department. And then the last one is approved the project budget for the fiscal year two thousand and twenty-one. Iowa Department of Transportation Air Service Development Grant in the amount of forty-eight thousand, in the amount of twelve thousand dollars estimated by the airport.
Second.
Discussion? I would just add that huge thanks to the Young Family Foundation. They give very generously to the city and we appreciate that as well as the funding sources for the other items.
Mrs. Jewett, Mrs. Jewett, I would like to echo that. I'm very proud of the Young Family and all their efforts. I am, I've seen these pollinator acres, acres and, um, they're doing wonderful, wonderful job.
Yeah, yeah. Very generous, Family Foundation. Any other questions or comments? If not, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And finally, for bills payment, Michelle, I'm sorry, I didn't have a chance to get off and find the bills payment amount.
The total for today is three million, six hundred, six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents. Three, six oh six, four zero zero point nine nine.
Thank you. Then in the amount of three million, six hundred and six thousand, four hundred dollars and ninety-nine cents as stated in bills payment dated twelve twenty-one of twenty, move to receive, place on file and forward to the full council.
Second.
Discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? We are adjourned. Thank you so much.